We should, in my opinion, adopt the policy that has, if we have official means, that's the official clock. And if it doesn't match your iPhone or the real time, fix the clock. Because it does get confusing.
I usually tell you whatever's on my computer.
That's why I'm saying just whatever's on your computer, if that's official, then make that clock match it each time you have a meeting. And you know, when you're wondering.
Is that clock behind?
When they walk through the door, they go, is that, that's our official clock?
Remember to turn your mics on.
Pardon?
Turn your mics on.
Oh, thank you. Okay, you're up, Rick.
Is mine? I guess mine does work. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for meeting and coming to listen to a little bit of what I've been thinking about for the airport. So, thank you for your time and all the things that you do to help me run the airport. I guess we need to do the first agenda item, which would be an easement for Idaho Power in order to, it's going to run down the airport and across in order to power two navigational aids that belong to the FAA. So it should be just a very straightforward, it's a benefit to the airport, and it's free. So my recommendation would, the staff's recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the easement and to authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents.
Council, do you have any questions about the easement?
Is that just to, that's going to this point in the southwest?
Yes, it is. It's gonna power the real lights and the VASs, the PAPs that belong to the FAA.
Okay.
Are we putting any other stuff in the ditch while we dig power?
No.
Do we need to?
Yeah, do we need to?
I don't think so this time. The runway lighting circuit is independent of the PAP and the real lights. So there on the south, the lights are part of the approach lighting and there on the center of the runway.
What's covering them now?
They are.
Lights are right here.
There's a transformer down there on that southern end. I'm not sure where it feeds from. Yeah.
Right here.
And the problem is, you know, when we move the parallel taxiway, that'll get, that existing transformer will get wiped out.
Okay, that's true.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I would be approved the easement between Idaho Power Company and City of McCall for an easement and right of way and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second?
The motion to approve the easement between Idaho Power Company and the City of McCall for an easement and right of way and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. If you move this second, it enters discussion of the motion. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Eman?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Okay, thank you very much. I've been here now for three months and I've had a chance to go around, look at the airport, look at various things, talk to some of the local pilots. And I see a demand for certain facilities and services that aren't being provided right now. And I thought I would try to bring some of the things that worked well at the other airports I've worked at to bring them here and see what we can do for the, for the development of the airport and for the city. Now today, my goals are not to make any sort of major decisions on any of these subjects. It's more to just let you, fill you in on my thoughts as to what I'd like to try to do. But my goal really is to just get your opinions and possibly your direction on which of these projects you might be interested in having me pursue or, or not for that matter. So, as I said, my goal is to fulfill some of the untapped demand and some of the things that the local pilots have been looking for. So, and what I'm gonna do is, my goal out of this is to, first off, to relieve some of this untapped demand for the various facilities and to generate more revenues for the airport, which I would like to use for just maintaining and repairing the airport, the day-to-day running, and also to be able to build up a little bit of cash for future capital projects. So on page two, you can see all of the different locations of the various projects that I'm going to be talking about. So if, that's a good one to refer back to as I talk about different things. Now for the short term, the very first one, and we probably have talked about this a lot, maybe even have beaten this one to death from what I understand, but on page three, you will see the triangle, the triangle development. This is from the, the top drawing there is from the airport layout plan. This is the one that's been approved by the FAA and this is the one that's going to move forward. And once or twice, whoops, excuse me. This seems to actually sideways with this. Okay. So I just pointed out the area for you. So like I said, it's on page three. This project's been a long time coming. It's been in fits and starts now for quite a bit. As a matter of fact, on pages thirteen through fifteen, you might recognize some of the previous versions of the design for the triangle project. Now, there's been a couple of areas that have caused this to be delayed. For example, the ASOS, which is the weather reporting equipment for the airport, is located in such an area that you can actually see on page three, it's the dash circle. Is the weather station's safety area. Cannot have buildings or structures or anything parked in there.
Rick, can you show me where that is?
Oh.
On page three?
Sure.
Colby, do you know where it is?
It is right here and here's the dash circle.
Okay, I see the dash circle. Okay, I was looking at the picture. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just showed everyone where the dash circle is. So, on the, on the weather station, in order to free up areas, more area for airport development, the ASOS is scheduled to be moved. It's going to be part of the airport master plan and will probably be part of the taxiway relocation project. And Kevin will speak to the taxiway relocation projects. This is Kevin, the official of TO Engineers, the airport engineering firm. And he'll be up to talk a little bit later about different things. And the other area, the other reason that more recently the triangle has not developed, has gone forward, is my predecessor wanted to change the orientation of the hangars from north-south, the way you see it here on draw, on top of the drawing on page three, to east-west. And the FAA put a kibosh on that just because they said, no, that's not in accordance with the airport master plan. We want it north-south. So since they provide some of the financing, that is, we pretty much have to listen to what they want. So right now, what I'm doing on the taxi, on this project, the triangle project for leasing out some of the space, is I've requested TO Engineering to schedule me to get up a drawing showing what would need to be designed and built in the area in order to facilitate building these constructions. The reason I'm not moving forward with it right now is TO is already doing two really big projects for the airport that I don't want to interfere with. One of them is the taxiway redesign. I mean, the taxiway realignment. I don't want to interfere with that because that has a solid deadline and it's 10.7 million dollars. So nothing interferes with that one. And then the other one is the airport master plan, which is underway. And I don't want anything to interfere with the airport master plan because that document is what the FAA will give you money to build things with. So since that has a lot of money attached to it, I want that project to go forward too. So after that clears up a little bit, I'll be working with TO Engineering in order to design out that area.
Rick, what's the deadline on the taxiway?
We have to have bids in hand on April 22nd.
Okay.
So.
Bids in hand, you don't have to have the project complete?
Right, that's right.
Oh, yes.
Correct.
Yes, no, no, we don't have to have the project complete by April 22nd, no. Bids in hand by the 22nd. So they're to the FAA. So, the area where it says location for ground leases, to move forward with that, it's 360 feet long. I haven't measured the width yet because of snow storage and taxiway safety areas, et cetera, et cetera. But there's enough space in there to have four or five different ground leases. And once I'm able to move forward with the project, I should be able to lease those out fairly quickly. So, my notes. So there's about 30,000 square feet of leasable space there and that would add about $9,000 to the airport's, to the airport's fund. So.
30,000 square feet is gonna yield $900?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, thank you.
Yes.
Annually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, now the current status of the project is the Airport Advisory Commission has, I've discussed it with them, Jay had discussed it with them, and they're pro for this activity. Now, as far as the city council, I'm not really sure. I wasn't here, so if this project had been discussed or not. But I just want to introduce you that it's something that I'm working on. So TO Engineering, what they'll be providing is drawings, drawings and specs showing utilities, also the future taxiway location, which changes, which might change the lease lots. And of course, the change to the airport layout plan. You have to have that up to date because that's the single document that the FAA will fund projects on. They approve the airport layout plan and they pay off of, they grant off of the airport layout plan. So FAA's no objection. I'll move forward with advertising and determine which of the leases. So.
Does the master plan have to be complete before the deadline of 4/22 for the taxiway?
No.
No, it does not.
Okay, so it's good.
Yeah, I'll talk about that later, kind of the process for the, for the master plan starting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So my question for just right now for, for the staff is, this project has been underway for a while. I'm still continuing to move forward with it. And my question just for city council is, do you still, would you still like for me to pursue this project for ground leases within the triangle project and just ask any questions and get any input that you might have or answer any questions you might have on this subject?
So is there a better use for this space than hangars?
No, not, not really. Hangars are what's, that's the demand that I have the most, to have 35 names on the hangar waiting list to lease spaces. So leasing out four or five hangars will at least move forward with some of that list. I cannot think of anything really that would be much better for that space on the airport.
Colby, what are your thoughts? Oh, go ahead.
So what we've seen over the years is a, is a shift from people wanting to tie down their airplanes out in the open to wanting to have them in hangar. Airlines are getting more expensive all the time, so most folks want to have airplanes in hangar. So the, the other real, if you look on this sheet that I handed out, you can see that the, the light, the light gray area shading is future hangar, I'm sorry, future tie-down development here that was recommended by the, by the current master plan. However, over the years, that demand has really decreased. So if we put in the hangars now, we're in compliance with your current master plan and it still will not include building more tie-down, surface tie-downs, it would be good. But right now, we're just really not seeing that in hangars so much anymore.
Colby, what are your thoughts?
I know that one of the discussions we had regarding this involved the utilities, who's paying for utilities and how that's gonna play out. There was some presumption, there was a lot of change that fell through.
Yes.
The reason why we shouldn't presume. So where, where are you on the utility development on that as far as costs and who's paying for it and what's, how, how are you proposing to proceed with that?
Well, for right now, we're very early, I'm very early on in this project on the utilities. That would be what I would negotiate with TO Engineers in order to lay out. For right now, there is already water in the area. And the second most critical thing would be to bring electricity to the area. I've already generated, getting some prices on the, on bringing electricity to the area. Now, as far as sewer, I was, as a utility, I want to just bring the electricity for right now to the, to the hangars so that they're usable. And I will be getting prices later on once the project's engineered and I can get some prices back. But for right now, I'm kind of back at more like the concept, you know, is this a good idea? Does city council feel that this is a good idea for me to pursue and find out the answers to these questions?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think the, the development cost to the city for that, you know, that's, that's gonna be the big discussion, the potential pull-up. I mean, nine thousand bucks a year is nice, but if it costs us a million bucks to do, then, you know, where's, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, once I have this information, I'll be coming back to the Airport Advisory Commission and to city council in order to get better direction on what the next step would be. So before I went anywhere, I would have this engineer and have some costs in hand to come back with you with.
Bob, what are your thoughts?
Couple things. One, I think the Airport Advisory Committee has an expectation that we're gonna explore this together. You know, the city staff, advisory committee would like to see that happen. So I would support that. You're, you're in the initial stages. And I agree with Colby that all of us are concerned about the mechanics of how we do it financially. Though, you know, to be responsible leaders, we need to know all of that at a later date. But we would like you to continue on exploring it and working with TO Engineers, the Airport Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Tom?
You know, I went on a tour with Jay. We, we really went back and forth through this area, looked at it really closely. And, and it, of course, it was in the winter when there was a lot of snow pileup out there, which is the prime time to go, I believe, just because of space. And it seemed like some of the aircraft were kind of tight through that area. And that, I guess that was just kind of his concern and one of my concerns and then from other people I've flown with and out of there. And, but, you know, it's a, it's a good investment and it's a good functional space. But when does, when, you know, what's the plan for when we start outgrowing our parking area versus hangar area? Because we don't have a lot of room to grow south. That, that's kind of a walled off zone out there.
Yes. Well, my plan is during the engineering of the, of the area and the actual locations of the lease lots, will be, I'll be, and TO Engineering will be reviewing, you know, how much an average bunch of snow would be, how much area it would cover and to make sure that there's enough room in there in between the hangars out in front on the, on the fairground to the side, that there's enough room in there to be able to put the snow and still be able to keep the hangars functional and the taxiways functional.
So how many empty hangars do we have right now?
None.
Okay, so they're all leased right now?
Um.
I know there was a time when we had about three that were for lease at some places.
I believe they're all occupied or full.
They're all full now?
Guys, shake, shake.
They're all full. They're all full. One's for sale, only another half a million. Yes, and let me just make a minor correction to that. We're, the airport leases the land, the hangars are actually owned by individuals, so they would actually be for sale. So there are none for sale right now. Thirty-five people are on the waiting list. And people drop by my office maybe once or twice a week, different people asking, you know, do you have any hangars up here? So there is a demand for it. And I'd like to fill that demand and capture that market.
Because I, I know Cascade is building, what, 10 hangars or, you know, nine hangars, something like that. And, and I'm not saying that we're a direct competitor, but they do have kind of an affordable solution that's in the area. And I hear a lot from a lot of, a lot of people that fly in and out of this area, so I, it's, I'm really interested in it.
Well, Cascade versus McCall, although we do, we do probably compete with each other, a lot of pilots would prefer to have their airplanes closer to where they live because Cascade's like a 30-minute drive. And if you're gonna fly down to Boise, for example, it'd be nicer to make a five-minute drive here from your house to McCall Airport instead of a 30-minute drive to Cascade only make, you know, and then just, it would be a total wash on, on the time to fly down.
But, you know, if the cost difference is a half a million dollar hangar versus a 250,000 dollar hangar, some people will drive for 30 minutes.
We build a million dollar hangar, is there such a thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was our proposed one was.
Yeah, that one. That was specifically, that, that large hangar that's shown on this sheet was for a very specific aircraft. So, so no, the city would not. And that, that really is a pretty limited market here. I mean, I think we're gonna be looking at more like condominium-type hangars or individual box hangars, that sort of thing.
So how does that translate into cash?
So the developer is responsible for paying for the construction of the hangar.
And we can talk about those two types of hangars, a million dollars versus 100,000?
Oh, it's probably to construct, I don't know, 300,000 to construct a hangar like that.
300,000 for a 10-box?
Well, it's a 30, like a 50 by 50 type hangar.
On, just to let you know, on pages 16 and 17 of the handout, there are, from one of the real estate agents in town, there are a listing of what some of the hangars have sold before over the past few years. And the cheapest one's 135,000 dollars and the most expensive one is 850,000 dollars that has sold.
Okay, so that's what they're used to?
Yeah.
Yes.
And there's a lot of expense in, you know, steel that goes into the, into the structure and there's insulation and lighting and then the roller door, not roller door, but the tilt-up doors are really expensive too, so.
And so the city pays for that development and then they purchase them? Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, the developers will just lease the land from the airport and the developers pay for building the hangar.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think if there's a need, it's worth pursuing. And, you know, hopefully, lease companies can afford it.
So if that's.
And what were you gonna say, Colby? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I was gonna say that the potential cost for us is kind of the, the underground and on the ground stuff. So I guess the question, another question I have is about the, the tie-down area that's lightly shaded, you know, is that part of, this is part of the, this current specific discussion? Are we talking about that later in this meeting?
Well, right now, there's no real demand for tie-downs. We have, what is it, 95 tie-down spaces currently? And I think on the busiest day, I've had maybe 30 airplanes tie-downs if that's right.
About your, your jet parking?
Usually they park over closer to the runway.
Yeah, I know where the jet parks.
Oh, but I won't show them. Usually the jets will park right here. When they come in, they go over right in front of, generally, McCall Aviation to drop off the passengers. And then if they're gonna stay, they'll tow them back up to this area right here. So that, well, so that there's more room in front of, in front of McCall Aviation.
So there's adequate space for what you have right now for jets?
Uh, yes.
Do you anticipate an increase in jet traffic?
Let's, no, not really, but the airport master plan is the document and the information that'll generate how many spaces that we will eventually need out there for jets.
Okay.
So, but we will be losing some of those jet parking spaces with the taxiway realignment?
No, what is planned for the taxiway realignment is they'll be going through that area, but to just take the first row of tie-downs that are right near there, take this first row of tie-downs away and move the jet parking spaces down to the east a little bit.
Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, on our current hangars right now, how many non-FAA uses are going on in our hangars?
I really haven't had a chance to count. Every, every hangar that I have seen does have at least one aircraft in it.
So, so if I take my, and I know, you know where I'm going, right? There's a storage facility in our airport right now that I have looked at and I don't think it meets FAA regulations.
Okay, which hangar would it be?
Oh, I don't remember the number on it, but I know it's full of boats and sold materials and an RV and some other things.
Okay. The FAA does allow if you have, you do have a dedicated use, aviation use for the hangar, which is basically an airplane that operates in it, that you can fill the space up with other things. That's a change from their previous rules and regulations. But I'll, I will research this. I'll ask some of the local pilots, maybe they know.
There's a blonde local pilot back there, she knows.
Oh.
There are a lot of hangars that do not have airplanes in them. And they're being used for strictly, even commercial storage. I won't name any business names, but.
And that's, that's where I'm afraid to go also, is I feel like we may be, there's some, there might be some stuff going on that we're not quite toeing the line on. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna dive in there and start ripping people's private, you know, that's, that's their stuff. That's between the FAA and you and hangar le, let, you know, the people that are leasing the hangars right now, their own building.
Well, I will look into that and report on it in the future.
So, so to provide a little more comment on that.
Sure.
It's not just between the FAA and, and I think we can weigh in on that municipal airport too. And I hear a lot of comments from commercial pilots that are looking for more hangar space and they have a concern about the current, I'll call it, abuse of, of those laws, where they see lots of stuff stored that's not aviation-oriented. So I think we do need a thorough briefing on that. And it's my belief that it's not just the FAA has to be pleased. I think that we in city council and staff and the Airport Advisory Committee have, you know, have a stake in that, trying to clean that up. I think personally, it's been abused quite a bit, as Tom stated.
Well, okay, then I will take it on as a project for the airport and in the future data, come back and report to the AC and the city council on it. Okay, thank you, everyone.
I think that they've employed a sweep on hangars several years ago, so. I think that Nathan Doyle did a sweep on hangars several years ago, so he may have some insight on that, I don't know. That's a phone call that can happen or not, but he may have some knowledge from, from the past, because I think that was something that happened, clearing, was concern over the, the use of hangars. I guess that my, coming back to the, the tie-down thing, that my concern with the, the new taxiway, and in conjunction with jet parking and fire aircraft parking, et cetera, I think it's true. In, probably in our master plan, at least, to really consider that, that area that we can't build hangars on. But this could be some pretty valuable space for, you know, the summer months and in the winter months, if you're able to push snow right down, right down these alleyways between hangars out into the area. But, you know, I, I can't see a decrease in jet traffic happening here unless some crazy thing happens in the world. But I, I, I think that, you know, between that and fire aircraft, we have to make sure we have that space there. You know, especially when you're considering some of these other things coming up on the agenda here and, and, you know, pushing into that space in the round area, and kind of into that zone, it seems like it'd be good to really consider where, you know, outlooks in the future.
Oh, yes.
Make sure we can accommodate what we need.
Well, both the taxiway project and the airport master plan project are both underway. I've seen some very early drawings of the taxiway project in there. It will work out, that's just, we're not far enough along in the project for all the geometries to be completed yet. But I'll bring that back to the AC and city council when I have the information.
Thanks, carry on.
Oh, thank you. Okay. This is what I call the Dine Hard One project, and you'll see a map of it on page four of your handout. It's an area next to my office, if you can, up to the airport manager's office. And it was a project started quite a while ago. It's a, it's a good place for a, to build a hangar and to operate a commercial business out of, just because the utilities are right there next to, either on this side or the opposite side of Dine Hard Lane. And customers will be able to get in and out without having to actually go up on the airport. So, that was a leased area, it was started before, and this is, looking to try to continue this project. Now, when I went to determine who might be in line to lease the area, I had been told it had been discussed by the AC and city council, and I was told that Dew Aircraft, Doug Dew is the owner, had the first choice. That was decided before, before I arrived. So, he's number one up for possibly leasing this land. And what Dew Aircraft is, it's the aircraft mechanics, aircraft maintenance facility pretty much for McCall. He's in a little space down tucked in on the Dine Hard side of McCall Aviation. And his hangar is, is taller than this room, but not very much bigger. And he can squeeze about three small airplanes in there, but you still have a little bit of trouble walking around them. So he would like to have bigger digs for his business. And what he's looking for is to have more space for his aircraft business. He said he would be able to hire some more mechanics in order to work on the aircraft because he says he has more business now that he can handle with the staff that he has. And he's also looking to have a little bit of office space and be able to lease out the office space. Now, the point we're at right now is I've given Doug Dew just a quick drawing of the leased area, pretty much what you see right here on page four. And I also gave him a very generic copy of a typical airport lease, so that he could read it and get up to speed on what the lease is going to be requiring. Now, this area is about 19,400 square feet, and the 30 cents per square foot per year, we would receive just a little less than $6,000 a year in revenues. So in, so, oh, and by the way, on page 11 is the list of other commercial tenants that are on the airport. Several who have said they're looking for property, leased area to build on, and a few that have just, are not interested in expanding at this time. So the, there is a list for that. So, the Airport Advisory Commission, I've already spoken to them, and they're fairly happy. They like the idea, and they have recommended that staff continue to work with Dew Aviation in order to lease out this area. And return, have me talk with Dew and work out some sort of draft lease with Dew, and then come on back to Airport Advisory Commission for recommendation and for city council to approve a lease with Dew Aircraft. So, I do have a question. Would the city of council like staff to continue with talking with Dew Aircraft in order to negotiate, eventually negotiate a lease with them? So that's kind of my question. Also, too, just to fill you in on any questions that you may have about the, the lease Dew Aircraft or what the plan is for this?
Colby? What are your thoughts?
I mean, yeah, I think that the, the local business, the general needs a new space. The concern about, for me, is the proximity to city Dine Hard and the potential change in that, what, you know, what ITD concerns might be, with access points on that, how that would change. I think that's a big one.
Do you understand that?
Yes, I did. You have repeated the question, is about the effects it'll have on Dine Hard Lane in the future project, about widening it or straightening it, the project for Dine Hard Lane. I have already spoken to Nathan and Michelle and Morgan about this very same subject, that I was going to be bringing this up to city council. And although I'm not the expert on roads, I was going to, when we get a little closer to actually doing a lease on this property, I wanted, I asked if they would come to the city council meeting with me in order to explain about what effect it would have on, on the Dine Hard Lane and traffic in the area. But right now, that's still something in the future. Right now, I'm just kind of looking at the early concept. Is this an acceptable idea to city council? And do you still want me to continue moving forward with this project?
I feel like that, that access point is, that's a very real concern at, at ITD level, on the city level. I mean, how, how do you propose to access this point?
Well, what both Nathan and Michelle and Morgan have brought...